Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Thursday, November 18th. The time is 6:41 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers, here. Jason Daly, here. Randy Towns, Mike Parsons, Samantha Lovelady, Mayor Shaw.
Here. They're all in attendance. As we just had Fudge's allegiance a couple of minutes ago. Objects, we will move on forward to the mayor's report. Item number one, Worden Park Playground, the equipment scheduled to arrive November 17th, which is yesterday, and it showed up. Thank you to Mr. Daly for allowing the city to store it. Once it arrived, it was obvious it was not going to fit in the city shop. And you can see it behind the security fencing there along the highway down at the mini storage. There's 14 pallets, some of them double sized. So really exciting. So thank you for that again. Hopefully, we'll get that going, install going as soon as the ground isn't too soggy for tractors. Some upcoming reminders, the Lewis County ARPA Fund Spending Priorities Survey is open to all citizens. You can go on the Lewis County website and give your opinion on how they should spend their money. Item number three, Lewis County Housing Policy Summit is December 2nd from 9 to 1. It says location not yet selected. They have selected it. It's at Centralia Community College. That is a Tuesday. Ms. Rogers, I know you originally you said you were going to attend, but your schedule no longer allows it. So if any other council members would like to attend, please contact City Hall so that you can be put in contact with the right people. I believe there's going to be an online option possibly for those that can do that. Lewis County Legislative Roundtable, November 30th from 2 to 5 at the courthouse. This is an opportunity for left officials to have a face-to-face or virtual face-to-face contact with our senators and other representatives. And so this is an annual event. So that is taking place. And once again, Lewis or City Council Meeting for next week, 11:25 Thanksgiving is not taking place because we're meeting tonight. Council reports. Any council members have a report? Yeah. Here none. Agenda approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve the City Council agenda for 11/18/2021.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the City Council Meeting Amendment Agenda for November 18th. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I approve the same council meeting, 11/10/2021.
You have a motion by Mr. Hall to approve the meeting minutes from November 10th. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the first half of November vouchers for $247,306.21.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. We have a second. Seconded by Mr. Daly. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Special reports. We do not have any special reports tonight. City business. Item number one, council to discuss the 2022 budget estimates. Before you, you should have the updated estimates for 2022. The changes that you have seen are only those that you're already aware of. So for instance, the playground equipment showed up. And so that is, we're going to pay for that this year instead of for next year. And so you'll see the refund balance affected because of that. Dan, what other large expenditures changed this?
We paid for the playground equipment, like you said. And also, there was a $700 in ways for robbers that transferred the money from the that we would have spent in 2022 to reduce the expenditure in 2021. And now it'll continue until the end of the year.
So like I said, we're still kind of in flux between this year and next year, where there are some large items that, you know, the question is, will they get paid this year? Will they get paid next year and how that will affect the budget, right? But these are just items that you all are aware of already. Talking about the Worden Park Playground project, the sewer upgrades, City Hall roofs and the shop roofs, foundation, those things. They're all in the one, one or the other budget, just where the expense happens, it'll get transferred back and forth appropriately. So other than that, all of the estimates that came in the, that were in the mayor's letter that you all received a couple of weeks back, all those numbers are staying the same. The only changes are just normal financial occurrences. Discussion? No?
Fill in the black. Yay.
Oh, yeah, there's, that's not the, that's not even a question. Audience, folks, public members. Judy?
Just looking at budget page four on expenditure. Two street fuel, around the middle of the page. And then, close to the bottom of page, like five lines ends up and nine lines down. Because there's supposed to be two, two street fuels. Now, nowhere is north. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. No problem. And then, question on page five expenditure. We're projecting $2,000 for the parks electricity. I was just curious, what do we use at McMurphy? Where did the funds then?
Streetlights and lights that are on in the pavilion, anything that's, that lights up. That's what's down there. Sorry, central park. And then, in McMurphy, there's a light.
And cameras.
Cameras.
I was going to say cameras, right?
Electricity that goes to those.
You know, so they're on their own meter, so they have a base fee. So the base fees are out of.
It just seemed a little for base fee type thing. At the very top of page four, and I apologize, maybe this is off track, but sidewalk and welcome sign repairs for $40,000. Is that a grant or is that money that's coming out of the city and, okay?
That's, that's real money, not, that's our money, not other people's money. Although it's all our money, right? Right? Yeah, that's right. Right.
All right. And then page one, question on, what is Southwest Air Pollution Control? Seems to be $30 annual fee that we pay, we're part of that. Like a membership or something, a subscription or something like?
Similar to like how we have to pay into the 911 system, there's a city fee, this, the clean air fee.
And then, a state audit for $19,000?
And there's two of those charges, actually. If you look in this, in the general, the general fund and in the sewer fund, yeah, $40,000 total. The state's going to.
An audit for only like $8,000 or something, did they?
We're having three this year, next year, because we have federal money. And then we have an accountability audit and
pretty sewer plan and that kind of thing. Obviously, this is a large amount of money that you're going to be.
That we're circulating.
Here's your $5,000 federal money. Here's the $40,000 bill to audit it.
It's not quite that extreme, but yeah.
Okay. And the next one that I questioned was, I did not see the COVID money.
It's changed names now. It's called ARPA.
Okay, well, I saw one of them at $187, but it didn't cross over.
We've got half the money this year, we'll get half next year.
I mean expenditures and revenue on kind of the girl that needs to see it on both pages.
Should be on both pages.
I didn't see it.
Well, it's, well, like on the revenue, excuse me, on the expenditure side, we haven't, we haven't given it a name yet.
Okay, throw it in here. That's my understanding.
Right. So we haven't, so we haven't said we're going to spend any. But it should be, oh, did you throw, did you throw on the? Did you actually throw on that?
On page two, yeah.
Should get moved. Okay.
Oh, I see. Okay, there we go. Thank you.
So keep in mind, though, that, that we have several years to spend that money. And so just because it says that it's being spent, we haven't given a name yet to be spent. And it carries over year after year. So it's not anywhere.
So we receive half the money this year, we receive the other half next year. And then, like those things, we haven't, I think, for 2024 to spend it all.
I worked off of the budget from 10 o'clock this morning. So I got sidetracked when I came here with anyone, so money wasn't held.
Happens when you spend money, it changes.
Oh, I know what I was going to question. There's a section, and it's just, it's like $35,000, and it's for people like Gary, the engineer and all of that. And it's all about the building permits. Is that the way I'm reading that? So is that for those guys to work on redoing the schedule? No.
No. When we get a building permit, if it has to do with anything that affects things near our ride underground, it has to be approved by our engineer, Steve Willey. And so there's planner, new body engineers, let's see. And then, if it has to do with land, you start, Gary was just dealing with this stuff. He reviews the, the permit.
Somebody for everything.
And then our building official reviews it for building contractors. So you have three people who review. So this year, we divided it into the three, so we could tell how the expenses were falling because before it was lumped into one thing.
Okay. And, and I need to work off my old one from this morning, but it's page seven, and it's sewer costs. Now, I'm just questioning, $4 million plant in 2022. Why would we want to have equipment purchase, miscellaneous expense, repair, maintenance, building and equipment? You know, I think it came to like, I don't know, $12,000 or something like that. Why would we want to put that in the budget with a new plant?
Because those expenses will possibly occur.
I would think that we don't know what the new plant's going to need for.
Have you seen the book on the new, Jason, do you not remember the leather chairs and the three kitchens? I mean.
To not, to not put, to not put, you know, repair money in the budget, even with a new facility seems irresponsible.
And I, obviously, I'm, this is not, this is just a discussion. But I was just questioning, you know, I can see testing, chemicals, and, you know, employees and that type of thing. But I was just thinking, as the general public, we have a $4 million plant that's going to be put in out there. And I just don't understand why they would buy a new dress and have to have it altered.
Well, keep in mind, we don't have to, if nothing breaks, we don't spend that money.
Sure, I understand that. I understand.
But we do, we are getting a new tractor with, so there's equipment right there, just part of that tractor.
Well, that's a whole different line item than like, I see that, I was just referring to the very top pieces. Where it was just kind of like maintenance, repair and maintenance on the building. So I just was questioning. So you're just putting it in as a safeguard.
Yeah. And you can see, and you can compare it to last, to this year, next year is compared to this year or the year after, you know, we're not being extravagant with those estimates.
Equipment purchase, I'm assuming that's the tractor? Because we spent nothing last year, the year before, we were spending $9,000.
Correct.
Okay. So, okay, I see that.
I do have a comment about, your example was great about buying the new dress. The engineer was actually here this morning, civil, from Civil West, and we talked. And he's in the process right now of writing the operation manuals for all the new equipment. And there will be costs for that. Like with your new dress, you got to wash it to wear it again, right?
Right.
There are incidental costs that go along with it operating. So that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so those types, they're going to, they're going to have to be. And I got the online stuff. I knew that.
And Judy, I buy, I buy new pairs of jeans all the time to the zipper bro, for half. Just never.
I'm sorry.
We do have warranty on a lot of that new equipment.
Yeah, right. But that's what I suspected. Let's see. My next question is, we've got a lot of building going on this year. And I'm anticipating there's probably going to be more next year. On both the expenditures and on the revenue, the sewer hookups didn't look balanced for some reason to me. I don't know. I just think that we got $10,000 this year, we were taking nickel. And then next year, we're only anticipating $5,000. And I know the hookups are what, four? Um, come on, this slide you're talking about. I'm on page seven. And it is right in the middle, and it says new sewer. And in actual, it appears, this is kind of revenue, I think, and actual it appears $10,000. And then for next year, we're thinking on the $5,000. And on the other, on the other, on the other one.
Revenue.
Yeah, you're making a good point.
Revenue. Because we pay for, we have here, do, review for.
And we have to pay someone to go out and, and do it, because obviously John doesn't do it.
So on, so the new sewer, if you look on the revenue, the last page of revenue, page six, the top section, there's sewer hookup fees. It's the fifth item down. And you can, and you can see there that we have, that's the 4,000s right there. So we have 20,000 there. So that's five, estimate, an estimate of five new hookups.
And then 20,000?
Yeah.
Okay, well, shouldn't we have an estimate of more than 5,000?
On the expenditures?
On the expenditures, because don't you pay to have someone come out and do that? Who does?
So, yeah, we do. So, yeah, we do have some expenditures, which is the 10,000. But it's less than the hookup charge. So when people build a new house and they go to hook up to the system, they pay into the system, right? So, and that extra money goes into the sewer fund, right? The city has over $300,000 sitting in the savings, savings account for the sewer fund for emergencies and things like that. And so that money goes into there, in essence, and it helps bolster it. So they, they buy into the utility that way. And so, yes, we get more money than we expend in actually getting them on the system.
I mean, and we can look at that number again, the 5,000, it may be.
Question. I keep those in all my questions for you.
Yeah, all they do is come up, make sure, make sure they keep it up.
Yeah, well, and, well, they, they have an engineered plan. They submit an engineered plan. It goes to the city engineer. They, he, he reviews it, comes back, has any suggestions. There's, yeah, and there's the administrative work, the, yep, all that. And then, you know, it has to get inspected. And so we do have some costs associated with it. But it comes out of their hookup fees. But it's less than what they actually pay into the system.
Here's one question. Why it takes this engineer six hours to look at a side sewer hookup?
I don't know. I've never engineered a side sewer before, so I don't know.
Look at his bill, because it doesn't take six hours to look at a side sewer hookup.
Sorry, where do you get the six hours?
On his bills. Look at his bills.
Well, I know that one from him that submitted a plan, and he approved the plan. So then, when they went out to look at it, the land was not what they engineered.
No, this is all the time. I saw when he really did a cheap one, the last one, it was like three hours.
And what I was saying is that he had to, they had to, new plans, he had to review those as well. So that would be why it would take long, that kind of thing.
Well, the reason I ask is, is my brother is an inspector. And so I called him about it. And, you know, take him a couple of minutes.
Well, that's not inspection, that's the engineer. There's the.
How long does it take to inspect?
Well, the inspection doesn't, right, it doesn't take long, right?
Six hours.
Right, we send someone out. But while, what you were, you were talking about the engineer. So the city engineer.
Well, he puts down six hours to look at a side sewer hookup.
That's correct. Yeah, they look at the, the developer or the property owner is submitting engineered drawings of the side sewer, right? All the elevations and all that to the city engineer. And the city engineer makes sure that they, that fits our codes, it fits whatever development regulations.
Is that it?
I.
I mean, come on, six hours, that's, and it's consistent. Not my worry anymore. It hurts.
But luckily, once again.
No hiding.
You know, that's, that's part of the, you know, this, the permit and the hookup fees.
Yeah.
And our, our fees are considerably less than other cities when it comes to the hookup fees.
I don't care what the fees are. I'm talking about how many hours it takes to look at a side sewer hookup. And even looking at the ground, I mean, at the side sewer. Okay.
Any other discussion on the budget estimates, questions? Okay. Moving on to item number two, council to consider ordinance 2021-08, property tax levy rate for 2022. Last week, council did decide to not raise the property taxes. And so this is the ordinance that will dictate that we don't raise it.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2021-08, property tax levy rate for 2022.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to approve ordinance 2021-08, property tax levy rate for 2022. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion?
I just would like to point out that you individually have to sign this ordinance so that we can make it official and send it to county.
Don't run away. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider resolution 20-2021, Lewis County Sheriff's Office Contract for Services. This is the renewal of our law enforcement services. Just echoes what Mr. Snazza talked about a couple of meetings back. Has this, the, it was a modest 6% increase over two years, I think, so 3% a year. And. A motion by Mr. Hall to approve resolution 20-2021, Lewis County Sheriff's Office Contract for Services. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. It's in stereo.
Yeah.
Discussion? Discuss though.
What is the dollar amount, please?
93?
It's in there.
92, 340, so eight hours in increase?
It is the same. It is still at 20. We did discuss that, and he's not able to offer increased patrol hours at this time. He's having a hard time with the recent losses of headcount. He's having a hard time maintaining just as active patrols as it is.
So 3% increase over the, over the year?
Yeah.
And it's for two-year contract? That's another $18,000.
You can see the difference in the budget item on page two. The previous contract was $87,000, and the new contract is $20,000.
It still includes all of the other, let's call them fringe benefits that come along with it. So we don't have to worry about jail expenses. We don't have to worry about medical expenses for any detainees that are impacted. We don't have to worry about municipal court costs, attorney's fees related to defenses or anything like that. It's, it's all included in there. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution 20-2021, Lewis County Sheriff's Office Contract for Services, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, council to consider resolution 21-2021, Civil West Contract Amendment Number Four. This is the Senate Amendment that you all saw at the last meeting, gave initial approval for. This expands their, excuse me, scope of work to enable them to do things like manage the grants for us and. What else did I say last week?
I was on mine.
You all remember? I read it out loud.
It's in the minutes.
Can you look it up? Anyway. It said, it was just expanded scope of work to take care of all the extra things that they've been doing for us.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 21-2021, Civil West Contract Amendment Number Four.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution 21-2021, Civil West Contract Amendment Number Four. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Daly. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Council to consider resolution 2022-21. This is banking unused property tax increase. So kind of goes along with the property tax levy rate. Since we did not increase it, there needs to be form of resolution to save that increase so that the city can use it at a later time. So if you remember, if you remember, we have roughly 10% of bank capacity. And this resolution will make it official, and we'll make sure the state knows about it. So we get to use it again someday if we so choose.
I make a motion that we bank the unused property tax increase, resolution 22-2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve resolution 22-2021. Do we have a second?
Seconded that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Discussion? Hearing, oh, we have a discussion. Yeah.
Making unused property tax increase, just means that's what you're calling it on the resolution? That's what you're naming the resolution?
No, that's what it's named. When we have the opportunity to raise it.
To use it, that's what it's named. And we have not, and you're not.
And so we just bank, we just put it in that we can use it later if we decide to. Yep, next year.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving resolution 22-2021, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Last, just some formalities on council to consider notice to proceed for fine polo construction, historic jail foundation repair. Obviously, councils approve the contracts and all that. This is part of the small works roster processes that we issue a notice to proceed. So that's what these next items are.
What does he plan to proceed?
The concrete, and then all the supplements, the contract has the insurance and everything.
And it has to be done before April 30th, 2022.
So it's just weather dependent, I'm not counting this.
So has there been any discussion about those ugly concrete steps he should not be putting up in front of the jail? So has there been any discussion about those ugly concrete steps he should not be putting up in front of the jail?
No, I haven't had a meeting with him yet on that.
To retain its historical look?
Would you like to be at the meeting?
Yeah, I would.
Then you will be at the meeting.
You'd let me know when it is.
Okay. I'd love to have you there.
I'll bet you would.
No, you have a soft spot for the thing, so.
A soft spot for the thing, I respect Vader's history, the exact thing that everybody here should be preserving it, whether you like it or not.
That's what we're doing.
Part of Vader, it's how Vader got here. So, anyway. It should be taken care of.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Do we need a motion?
Do we need anything?
It's already done, so. Make a motion that we proceed with the historic jail foundation repair.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to, um, approve the notice to proceed for fine polo construction, historic jail foundation repair, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Love Lady, discussion? Yes.
Is your plan, plans that a person can review that? And look at these ugly stairs that Dom was talking about.
I think what he wants to put up, concrete steps for the jail. That is just.
Didn't we discuss something a couple of meetings ago? We had like a full plan written up, I can't remember what meeting it was at, though.
I didn't see.
I thought we had something.
They just have concrete steps.
It's a written description.
Yeah, but it is a description of some sort.
So instead of concrete steps, you want wood steps?
Well, it should look, I think, to the historical look of the jail.
It'll, it'll still.
Concrete does not look historical.
And it'll still need to have some type of ADA access as well, so obviously steps wouldn't, wouldn't.
No, but there's still the ramp there, or whatever they're gonna put in, so I don't know. It just needs to be kept as close as it possibly can be excluding concrete step. So it looks, it keeps its look of historical value. I, I can picture these concrete steps going up to that jail, just as ugly. It is horrible.
You can stamp concrete.
Lewis County courthouse?
Those concrete steps were put in there when they built the con, the courthouse.
Okay.
These concrete steps don't fit the jail.
Well, actually, the jail was moved, so nothing fits the jail.
I don't care what, whether the jail was moved or not, it is where it is. Concrete steps would not make it look any better, it should try to keep its historical look.
Well, have wood or rock, I'll make sure that we're all together.
It can be replaced.
Okay. Discuss though.
You can stamp concrete to make it look like wood, so, and paint it and stain it.
Oh, you're correct, Mr. Goff, yeah, there's a variety of ways you can do concrete to make it look, um, historical in nature and, and less plain, I suppose, so, yep. All right, so, uh, we had a
made a motion.
Made a motion, we had a second? That we were on discussion, we were on discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last item, city business number seven, council to consider notice to proceed, Cascade Industrial Services for the city hall and garage roofs, a motion?
I make a motion that we proceed for the city hall and garage roofs with Cascade Industrial Services.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to, um, offer the notice to proceed to Cascade Industrial Services for the city hall and garage roofs, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Hall, discussion?
Where, where are these, where are these guys from, Cascade Industrial Services?
Do I see what it says?
Does anybody here know them personally?
Not personally, they were one of the, well, if you remember when we went out to bid for this, we went out, I don't know, how many companies, hundred? Two hundred, six hundred companies we emailed? Yeah, and then just a handful came, bids came in, um, council was presented those bids, they were the lowest, they were the lowest responsible bidder. So they're, they're on. Friends.
Not personally.
They were on the small works roster and they were contacted through the small works roster.
So it's fine polo.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Public comment?
Tonight, oh, excuse me, Judy Costello, seven oh sixteen street. Tonight I want to talk to the group about your moral compass. Now, it gets better. We had a fire in our community last Friday, and all of you are going to shake your head that you know about it. But here's what my problem in life is, it wasn't until I went over there Monday afternoon to find out nobody had gone over there and checked on that young man. That young man had no clothes, everything he owned burned up in that property, everything. No shoes, no nothing. And when I asked him, what could I do for you right now, he said, I'm hungry. And so I went and got food for him. And a couple more of us now, Cindy Radcliffe and myself, have provided him with blankets and food. And finally got a hold of the church, which I am disappointed that nobody's here representing the church. But I would tell them also, when there's a fire, that is the worst thing in anybody's life. And I don't care who you are, who you know, or who you don't like, or like, or whatever. All of us, please, reach out to these people, please. I've now, I've now got him set up, his phone burned up and all of that. So I went down and got a donation for a track phone, so he can at least feel like he could dial nine one one again, because people have been over there rummaging through his property, you know, and I went today and he wasn't there, so I'm hoping that he went to stay with someone. But again, I just wish everybody would think about this. Because if it happens to you, I will come to your home and ask you how I can help you, but I'm hoping the rest of Vader would step up a little bit and at least address this. And that's my comment for tonight.
Hey, I appreciate you did that. I, what bothers me is the accusation that we don't care about people. And fact of the matter is that house burned up on Thursday or Friday last week, there were ten firefighters there.
I, I did not say, I did not say anything about the response, any of the.
There were ten firefighters there, folks that are trained in that, they would have taken care of that individual. And the fact that he came back to a unlivable property a few days later and was apparently there, I'm, I'm thankful that, that, that you noticed him and that you did something. Um, but, you know, started your conversation about a moral compass, and if someone shows up to a burned out house days later, how are the six of us supposed to know about it?
Well, a lot of people in town knew about it. It wasn't something that just. It wasn't something I went, oh, I could run over and see if someone's there, I, I mean, I'm just saying. You know, and, and if a person, and seriously, if a person goes back to their property and that's all they've got, that's not uncommon for somebody to go back and camp out or do whatever they need to do.
Yeah, but once again,
I mean, I mean.
How are we, how are we supposed to know?
Can I say something, please? I am the one that calls nine one one for the fire, and this kid comes running over there with no shirt on. And he goes, and he's running around like a chicken with his head cut off, and he's trying to get stuff, and he says, I don't even live here. But yet he was taking care of the place, and I know that when I talked to that gentleman before, the grandfather that owns the property, I don't know where they went. There was another young man that was the grandson of the grandfather that was living there in the RV for quite a while, and they've all disappeared. I don't know where this guy came from, he told me he didn't live there, but he was running around trying to save everything. People across the street came over there, they were helping him try to put it out, he was trying to keep the RV from getting burned up. So I set their profile, the fire department came after I left. I saw him coming in the rearview mirror, so I just got out of the way so they could be there. So his comment to me was that he didn't even live there. So I don't know.
I didn't think anybody lived there.
Well, they.
I hadn't seen anybody in a long time.
They were staying in the RV for quite a while.
Did I just hope that jail windows would live? Okay?
Oh, I didn't know anybody lived there.
It was a one, it was several homeless people living there.
Well, this, this gentleman, just.
Are you sure that he actually lived there, or did you just buy a homeless guy a phone?
No, he, he's not, his dad owns the property.
So it's the grand, the young man that was living in the, in the RV?
Yes, and he was living in the RV. Did he have his shirt, I think he, didn't he have that?
What's that?
Well, the property has been condemned, um, and we've sent information that they have acquired, it's a Spanish property. And so it's posted, it's got.
Morning.
That happened Monday. So, um, nobody can be on company.
I don't think that RV's even livable now.
No, it isn't.
Yeah, so that's what he told me, and, and the first time that it burnt, it wasn't even in the paper. Nobody around here acknowledged when it burnt the first time. So, yeah.
Thank you for helping out a resident of the city. It's an unfortunate situation, um, I'm, I'm glad he found some help.
Is he still living there, Judy, or did you find?
I wasn't there this morning when I went in to take food. The new signs are up, and up today when I went over there, so that may have encouraged him to go to.
When I came back in town, Monday, they were there.
His grandparents, they live in Enchanted Valley, they're the owners, so he's got resources.
Yeah, I, like I say, he told me he didn't even live there, he was just kind of watching the play. And he was running around, he fell down a couple of times. Well, he fell down out there really hard, I tripped over something that was there, trying to get, he was just trying to grab stuff and didn't even know what to do, he was just panicking, so.
All right. Um, any other elected official comments? Just in general, about anything?
Oh, elected official, um, so we have the meal pickups on Saturday at the church from eleven to two, so if you signed up to get a holiday meal, we'll be at the church at NX on the side, you'll see my car. Big white issue.
Great, any other elected official comments, announcements, upcoming holiday related things?
I can tell you that the local cafe is gonna be closed on Thanksgiving.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Jason gets a break.
For the whole day.
So if you're looking for turkey from Little Crane, don't go there. All right, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-three PM. Thank you, everybody.